Hi, I'm Bill Plasko, Chairman of Norwood Board of Selectmen. Today, I wanted to take a moment to explain how town meeting will work this year because it's a little more complicated than normal. When we originally called town meeting, two special town meetings, Norwood was still in the green, but now we have COVID cases and we find ourselves in the red as much as the rest of the car mold is. Unfortunately, the state law does not allow us to change our in-person meeting to a remote meeting, and we came up with a unique solution that we feel works best for everyone involved and has been agreed to by the moderator, myself, as well as the chairs of the Finance Commission, School Committee, Board of Health, and Planning Board. So I hope you'll all agree that this works. On November 12th, we will have our in-person town meeting at the high school with the gym the same as it was set up the last spring. We will take only the three article town meeting of the two articles, two town meetings we have, and we'll finish the budget allocating funds for the hybrid learning model in the school system and for the capital plan. We have to take these items up to balance our budget, set a tax rate, and complete important projects this year. The other town meeting, which deals with land use articles as well as many other important items that were on the larger town meeting warrant, that will be held and delayed until January when we will be able to likely hold a digital town meeting. I encourage each of you to check out the town meeting page and see our warrants, our yellow sheets, and the capital plan that's been sent out to town meeting members to be prepared for town meeting. Town officials are ready and willing to answer your questions if you contact us so that we can be prepared and keep the meetings to a minimum. However, we do wish that not to try to limit participation, but to try to make it as expeditiously through the meetings as we can so that we can avoid any possible complications with the COVID concerns we all have. So I look forward to seeing you, many of you as possible, at our brief town meeting on November 12th, and then a new exercise for us all will take place in January as we try to deal with a remote meeting. Thank you very much, and I'll see you on the 12th.
Hi, I'm Bob Donley, Chair of this year's Finance Commission. On next week, on November 12th, we will be having a town meeting to vote on a number of financial articles at the town meeting, and I'd like to give you some information, specifically an overview of those recommendations from the Finance Commission, and share a short update on the overall condition or situation of town finances, so with a focus of, you know, telling you a little bit about where we are and how we got here. The first slide is just a summary of the articles that we will be speaking to or looking at, hopefully voting on, on November the 12th. So what you have here is the typical pink sheet that town meeting members get in advance of the town meeting, and I'm just going to go through them very quickly. On October the 26th of this year, the FinCom did vote in favor of all these articles. So I'll speak to each one, talk to you about what the funding source is, and then we'll continue on for a little more information about the town's financial condition, if you will. So the first article is the application of free cash to offset the tax rate in an amount of $618,232. That source of that money will be free cash, and basically, the background to this is that at our annual town meeting back in May, we reduced our revenue projections due to the impact of the pandemic. So we had planned to deal with as much as a $2 million reduction in revenue, mostly in state aid. So the good news here is that because we are waiting till the fall to reconsider the budget, this budget item, the reduction that we're looking at in revenue is more in line with $600,000, not the $2 million that we were not looking forward to having. So it is proposed here in this article that $618,232 in free cash be applied to offset the loss in revenue that we anticipated, and this will also allow the assessor to go forward with the tax rate process for the upcoming tax year. Second item is a school department-specific item. I'm sure you were all familiar with the process at the remote and hybrid education model that the schools have had to implement due to the COVID pandemic. That has resulted in the need for the school to hire about 20-plus additional instructional staff to employ the hybrid and remote model for this year. So the total cost of that is going to be about $1.7 million, and the schools themselves have absorbed over $1 million of that cost, but there is a need for additional, an additional $746,158 for the salary and benefits for those new hires, and we do hope that this is an article or an item that we'll only be looking at in FY '21. We're all hopeful that hybrid and remote schooling will not be needed in FY '22. And the source is free cash. The third item are our capital outlay items. This is a combination of the use of free cash as well as borrowing. There's lots of information in your yellow sheets as well as online at the town website regarding what's in the capital outlay, capital improvement plan. It has been voted upon by the Capital Outlay Committee. It is a series of projects and purchases totaling $7,543,000, and we delayed the vote on capital outlay to default intentionally from our May meeting so that we would have a better handle on our financial situation at this point in time than we would have had in May. The second item is capital outlay for an infrastructure improvement plan. It's a brand-new program in Norwood. Again, a lot of information online about it, but essentially, it's twofold. It's $2.8 million in borrowing for this year to advance more road construction, more paving in Norwood, and this is expected to run a five-year course of road construction above and beyond what we do in today, in today's budget. Again, $2.8 for roads for this year, borrowing is the source. And on the water side for infrastructure, there is $4.5 million worth of borrowing to focus on improving our water infrastructure by relining water pipes. Now, we do that currently in today's world, but this is a program that will advance above and beyond what we do today in the area of that of water relining and road construction. So Capital Outlay has approved those programs. There are two smaller items, capital-related. There is a $156,400 item for firefighter tools, mechanical tools. These are pretty advanced diagnostic tools that there is a need in the fire department given the size of its fleet and the complexity of its fleet. This will bring them up to speed in order to maintain their fleet properly in years to come. That source is free cash for that item. And finally, on the agenda is a capital outlay-related cost for the civic elevator. We passed a civic elevator capital outlay request last year. It is now at a point where there's realization that the elevator is quite old and requires some really specialized work. It's going to need another $225,000 to accomplish that work, also from free cash. I should say right now that the totals for free cash, the totals for these articles are $16,588,790. Of that, free cash will be utilized and specifically used from free cash would be $1,745,000 and $790,000. And borrowing, $14,843,000. There is a chance that before town meeting, there may be some shifting of what items get paid for in free cash versus what items are borrowed for, and if that should occur, town meeting will get advance notice of those new figures. But the bottom-line figures and the specific items for approval are not going to change. So I'm going to go to the next slide, which is talking about our fund balances, and here I just want to spend some time just getting people updated in our financial situation. Every year, we do this at the fall meeting, and one of the things that we have highlighted over the past several years are our fund balances, specifically our stabilization fund and our OPEC account, as well as our override stabilization fund. Later on in the presentation, we'll talk about the importance of maintaining strong reserves and maintaining a good credit rating, which we do have. So in the stabilization fund, this is a fund, this is our rainy day fund. It's primarily there to meet emergency needs or pay for unforeseen obligations, and we have been consistently funding the stabilization fund annually for some time. By way of our financial policy, the stabilization fund should be equal to 5% of our total nonutility operating expense. So with this additional $428,000, we're going to be at that targeted level pretty closely. Almost $6 million will be in the stabilization fund, and we'll be able to fund it this year. OPEC, we did fund $250,000 this year to the OPEC liability fund. It stands, the trust fund now stands at just under $3.5 million, and this is important because the override pledge, our proposition override pledge, we did commit to making sure that we would contribute $250,000 for the five-year period FY '20 to '24, as per the override pledge. The override stabilization fund, that serves as a reserve to help us meet our override pledge as well. That pledge states that we will have no operational override during this five-year period, FY ' '20 to '24, and the override stabilization fund is there to act as a reserve in the event that we need to pay for some operational expenses that will minimize or actually eliminate the need for the town to consider any kind of future two-and-a-half override during that five-year period. And so the good news here is we have funded these, all three of these items, in FY '21. The asterisks on the FY '21 additions for stabilization and override stabilization fund just reflect a motion from the annual meeting in May, which we'd said that we would put a pause on expending those into those funds until the fall, at which time we would determine if we have adequate financial, we have adequate financial resources to fund them, and the good news is that we do. So they will be funded, which is excellent news for Norwood. I want to talk a little bit on the next slide about the history of free cash. In FY '20, we reserved over $2.5 million in our FY '20 free cash amount. We had free cash amount certified at $3.4 million. Normally, we spend that down to about five, you know, and retain about $500,000 in reserves. We spend that down. We usually use free cash to help pay for one-time projects, our capital expenses, anything that's nonrecurring and not something that is on the operational budget year after year after year. But this year, we preserved or reserved, rather, $2.5 million, anticipating that, given our state aid and local revenue reduction impact, we should save some of that money just in case we needed it for the fall meeting, and as we see, we do need it. So in terms of the amount of free cash that we got last year, $3.4 million, that was nice. It's a big increase from the prior year, but generally, we're doing okay. It's an okay amount. We hope that in the future, given that we do a very good job of budgeting, we are conservative in our budgeting, we hope that the FY '21 certification for free cash is well above that $3.4 amount, but that remains to be seen. The state needs to certify that before we can be sure of that. I just wanted to talk a little about, on the next slide, about, I mentioned earlier, about talking about where we've been and how we got here. I think that FY '21 has certainly had its share of challenges, and I think that we have responded well to those challenges. You know, COVID-19 pandemic has had an impact on us. It's something that we were dealing with at the annual town meeting, but we're unsure of the total impact. But we do know that now that state aid, as I had mentioned earlier, had been reduced from its initial projection. We also know that some of our local revenue has been reduced because of the pandemic. These are fees that we raise and taxes that we receive from hotel use, meals tax, excise taxes, and things such as that. But the good news is that, you know, that particular line item is a small portion of our budget, and we should be able to withstand that loss of revenue with the plans that we have in place. Also, we didn't really have on the agenda for our May meeting, our annual meeting, the concept of hybrid and remote learning models for education and the increased costs for staffing and benefits that that resulted in. What has been our response? It's been an effective response. We reevaluated our financial situation considering the impact of our pandemic. We started that at our annual town meeting. We made some adjustments in our FY '21 budget at the annual town meeting. We redid our projections for revenue, reduced them in anticipation of lower revenue streams. We delayed the approval of our capital outlay plan to the fall town meeting, and we used borrowing for our capital improvement plan and our infrastructure improvement plan and less reliant on free cash. We did that so we could reserve that free cash to offset the reduction in state aid and local revenues. And we have to say, the school department has made great efforts to absorb much of the additional costs for their hybrid learning model within their own budget, and they need some help in the area of that $746,000 to completely implement it. And also, I think a good response in our part is that we asked town management to update the five-year long-term financial forecasts with projections through FY '26. Because we do that because decisions we make financially today have implications for what we can do in the future, and I'm pleased to say that Tony and his team have done a good job updating that long-term financial plan with projections through FY '26, and we'll speak to that a little later in the presentation. In terms of our short-term goals, as listed on this slide, we're using free cash to offset the reduction in state aid and local revenues in FY '21 and FY '22. We hope that we don't have to do that in FY '22, that by that time, we hope that we are not in a pandemic situation and our finances will be more effectively in play at that time without a pandemic in play. We want to minimize the impact to our citizen services, so this budget has no service cuts attached to it, and that's remarkable given what's happening in this world, that our citizens can trust that town government is going to deliver the same citizen services that they have for a number of years. And we want to ensure that the department, the school department, has sufficient resources for hybrid education, building our reserves, such as stabilization fund and override stabilization fund. These were the things that we really needed to focus on in FY '21. So I'd like to just say on the next slide, kind of compare with, I'm sorry about that slide being so low. I'll read it for you, so small. We want, on the long-term basis, to be able to meet the financial objectives of the override pledge while maintaining financial stability. So we have an override pledge that has a number of components to it in terms of what we need to do in order to retain the pledge to the citizens regarding how we're going to manage the override monies that are coming in due to Proposition Two and a Half, and we are doing that. We want to extend the financial forecast, the long-term forecast, beyond the initial five-year period, and hopefully, we'll be able to do that. And I think the initial information tells us that we should be able to extend our financial forecasts out to FY '25 and '26 and not have any need to revisit a two-and-a-half override for operational needs. We want to improve or at least maintain our credit rating, and we want to build up our reserves. We need, you know, these are things that are important to us in the future as we borrow for things such as a new middle school project, for example. Maintaining our quality citizen services, big goal for us long-term, and we want to invest in capital and infrastructure improvement plans while keeping within our debt capacity objectives, which we are doing. We have an objective or a goal, rather, of using free cash for nonrecurring expenses. That is our policy, to use free cash for one-time projects and capital expenses. Now, in FY '21 and perhaps in FY '22, there is a need due to the unexpected situation of the pandemic that we'll use some of that free cash for our operating budget, more so than we've done in the past, but we will hopefully, and we are hopeful, that in FY '22 or at least by FY '23, we will return to our financial policy of using free cash for nonrecurring expenses, like one-time projects and capital expenses and that. And the good news also from a long-term financial goal is that we're in a situation where we can do all of what we've listed here, plus continue to fund our OPEC, our other post-employment benefit and pension liabilities. All these are important goals for us to attain as financial goals for the town of Norwood. I want to talk a little bit about credit rating, S&amp;P credit rating on the next slide. So this is a slide we've had the last couple of years. It remains current. We are rated for credit by Standards &amp; Poor. We have a double A-plus rating from Standards &amp; Poor. That is, I think that is the second-best rating a municipality can have. S&amp;P has cited our strong management, our very strong liquidity, and they've actually also let us know that the debt that we are borrowing is lower than our allowable capacity. That is, that the amount of money that we are borrowing is actually within the capacity that we allow for in our financial policies. All good things. They have recognized and identified that the weakness to our credit rating are our reserves. Our reserves are lower than those with triple A ratings. So that means that, so for us to achieve a triple A rating, we need to pay attention to our reserve levels, and we need to add to them to address this weakness. And if you look at the size of reserves of towns with a triple A rating, you'll see very large reserves, and for Norwood, it would take some time and investment to attain those reserve levels, but the benefits would be well worth it because as we go forward, for example, with a large-scale borrowing for a middle school construction, to be able to borrow money at a triple A rate as opposed to a double A-plus rate, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars in principal and interest costs that we could be saving. So very important thing to keep our eye on. I did want to just give you an example on the next slide of how we have done an effective job. The town meeting members have done an effective job by, through their appropriations over the last several years, in building up reserves. This is a history of the building up of our stabilization fund balance and our actual contributions that we've made over the years to that fund. In FY '13, our stabilization fund stood at about $5.1 million. That was reflective of 5% of our nonutility operating expense, probably just where we want it to be by way of policy. In 2014, FY '14, we made a decision to borrow from that fund to help support the construction of the DPW facility. So we see the big dip in the orange there, the $2 million plus in our reserve account level. But we made a commitment in blue. You see the numbers, $400,000 and thereabouts every year to build that fund up. You see the orange bar grows every year with the commitment we made to contribute to that fund, to where now we are at a point where at just about $6 million, the stabilization fund is pretty close to where we want it to be by policy, 5% of our nonoperating expenses. And hopefully, our credit agencies will take note of the good work that we have done in building up our reserves. So I did want to speak a little bit about financial trends and how we use them in Norwood. We were fortunate enough for Mr. Mizuko to arrange for the Finance Commission to meet a gentleman, John Cordair, Northborough's town administrator, and John is an expert on the use of financial trends in developing budgets and measuring the effectiveness of financial policies and strategies in managing town finances. And we've employed, I'm not going to speak to you about the specific trends. We have several of them that we have put into the budget book this year, but we use these trends to help us make our decisions. We use these trends so we can predict, so we can predict financial trends so that we can be prepared to deal with fiscal distress before it becomes a fiscal crisis. An example of that might be, you know, a town having the right trend data that tells you that what we are doing in terms of our budgeting is entering into a phase of structural deficits where we're maintaining the same level of services, yet we are in a situation where we don't raise enough revenue to support those services because so much of our funding of those services has been done with one-time revenues that may not reoccur in the following year. We want to avert when those things happen, avert and take action to avert those crises, mitigate, take corrective action necessary, update our policies, make sure that we retain a financial footing that's sound, or at least contain that problem, if not correct it. And we want to put forward a strategy that prevents a recurrence of any fiscal distress after we've addressed that issue with that crisis. And again, you'll see the example of the reliance on one-time revenues or health insurance increases. So the next slide is just some summary slides on distress versus crisis. We're in a good situation, we're in a good spot here in Norwood. We're not in distress, and we're not in crisis. We're not in a situation where we have a temporary imbalance between the level of financial resources the town has committed and its potential available resources. We've done a good job making sure we did have available resources to adapt to changing circumstances. We certainly are not in a fiscal crisis. We're not, we are paying our bills, we have good free cash, we have money, we have good bank account levels in our various accounts, and we are providing consistent level of services to our citizens. And the budget goal, you know, we're entering in, later this year, in the beginning of next year, into our budget planning for FY '22, and during that time, you know, we're all going to be looking at protecting our policymaking ability, making sure that we're making decisions that are controlled by our trends and our data and our long-term forecasts, that they are informed by those tools, and so that we are not being controlled by our financial problems or emergencies. This year, we've done a good job using those tools to control our financial problems, and the problems are not controlling us, we are controlling them, which is an excellent place to be. One last slide from John, Mr. Cordair. This one caught the eye of several of us at his presentation. Causes of financial trouble, the one commonality among financial, among the financial pitfalls identified is that they are more likely to occur when decision-makers fail to track fiscal indicators, fail to adopt and adhere to financial policies, and fail to acknowledge and take timely action when presented with new or unpleasant information. I think this year is a good example of the town really reacting to changing in unpleasant information, given the impact the pandemic has had on our expenses and our revenues, and we've taken the timely action to deal with it. So we have good financial policies, we have good information on our fiscal health, and we are using our long-term financial forecast to help inform our decisions. So that's a lot of financial nerdy stuff to deal with, but we felt it was important that we kind of give you the lay of the land just to show you a little bit about the kind of tools and information we're using to make these decisions. I do want to end with a quote, I'm sorry, there's one more piece of information I've included in here. A lot of information on the town of Norwood website, you know, there is a town meeting notices and document page on town meeting. There you will find the warrant, the yellow sheets. You'll find the capital outlay plan. You will find information regarding the infrastructure plan, and on the school site, you'll find information on the school's plans for financing the remote hybrid model, and actually, NCM is also doing a great job of posting this information on their, on the government channel for everyone to view at their leisure. One last slide. I always think that Abraham Lincoln is always a great person to be able to quote from, whether you're talking about democracy or government. You can always find a good quote from Abraham Lincoln, and I think as it applies to the Finance Commission, it's probably not quite everything that we can do for you, but we are committed to giving you the truth. Now, we can't give you the beer that Mr. Lincoln mentions here, but the point is that we will bring you the real facts, and with those real facts, I think we'll all be able to make really informed decisions on November the 12th. So that's the end of my presentation. I thank you for listening to me and hearing about this information. I look forward to the November 12th town meeting, and I wish you all well, and please, everyone stay safe. Thank you.
Hello, I am Teresa Stewart, the Chair of the Norwood School Committee, and today I am here with Dr. Thompson. We are going to give a brief presentation ahead of town meeting. Town meeting is going to be on November 12th, but we are here to talk about the COVID-related school budget adjustments. If you've been following along with the school committee over the last couple of months, you already know that many things have been changing thanks to a number of new state requirements. Over the summer, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued significant guidance and new requirements for school districts in Massachusetts. We worked fast with creating plans for three different types of models of education: fully remote, a hybrid approach, and an in-person model. After extensive analysis and discussion with our local Board of Health, we did unfortunately determine that at this time, the district cannot offer 100% fully in-person models, but we are offering a remote option as well as a hybrid model. The state has told us that each district is required to offer fully remote learning academies, and we will share with you more in this presentation how it has impacted our budget and our operations. The state has also told us that we are required to give families the opportunity to move from models throughout the school year. We are currently in the process of having families We are currently in the process of having families move into or out of the RLA and into or out of the hybrid model. Families have until November 4th to make that decision for the middle and high school and until November 20th to make that decision for grades K through 5. There will be other opportunities throughout the school year for Terms 3 at the K through 5 and Terms 3 and 4 at grades 6 through 12. In addition to this guidance from the state around educational models, the state, as well as the CDC, have also issued significant COVID guidance. This guidance, again, impacts our operations and our budget. All staff and students must wear face coverings or masks when they are in our building, and the school committee did pass the policy this summer to reflect this requirement. The CDC has said that it is best if students are six feet apart at all times. This is really important to keep in mind for why we do have some of the restrictions in our hybrid model. Students must be at least six feet apart whenever the masks are removed, and masks are removed while eating or for mask breaks. There has been guidance around transportation for school buses. Capacity is limited and assigned seating is required. There is also additional requirements from DESI around certain activities such as physical education and music classes. And lastly, there is a significant list of cleaning and safety protocols that Norwood Public Schools has to follow this year.
Okay, thank you. So while we designed this, we, we did give a priority to in-person instruction, especially with students with high needs, and these would include substantially, substantially separate special education classes and our lower-level students who are trying to acquire English skills. So families can opt for remote-only instruction, and the district must provide appropriate services in the remote-only option. The district is required to create an additional COVID-19 special education plan for each student. This is work beyond the normal planning for special education plans, and we need to meet, to consider the need for compensatory services due to the spring shutdown. So all of these are impacting our Student Services Department. So Norwood's plans, we started with a self-study, and during that self-study, it revealed that a full in-person instruction was not possible, given the public health guidance and the social distancing of six feet or more. As you will remember, we do have overcrowded and older schools at the elementary level, and spacing there is limited. And our high school was built to specifications that also limit the size of our classrooms. So social distancing and small school limits limit the number of students we can physically have in person at any one time. We also built a plan to ensure cleaning and safety protocols, and that's why the Wednesday is between the two cohorts in the hybrid model. And we had to design a model to prioritize live teaching and instruction in our hybrid models. So our current model, Norwood Public Schools, is using a hybrid model as well as running the Remote Learning Academy, which is that remote-only option. The hybrid model means most students have two in-person instruction days a week and then three remote days each week. High-needs students have four days of in-person. Again, those are your substantially separates, your low-level English language learners, and one remote day. And again, those are Wednesdays between the two cohorts to allow for cleaning. And the implementation of the, implementation of the hybrid model is slightly different in each level. At the high school, the only difference, there is live instruction going on. It is being sent out live via video. And at the middle school, we're using Teams, some are live and some are in-person. So again, class size is limited by the physical size of the classroom, so generally, that's can be between 12 and 16 students at a time. It depends on the elementary school or the size of the school. For kindergarten, what we did was we are operating kindergarten classes in side-by-side classrooms with a paraprofessional in the class and the teacher moving back and forth in adjacent rooms. At the middle school, we made, we're making use of double-sized classrooms and removing the folding wall so that we can have a larger class in there, but they're in two rooms and separated, socially distanced, rather. At the high school, we're using the gym, the library, and other larger spaces for specific classes, as well as having live instruction with in-person and at-home students. The elementary schools don't have these options for these larger classrooms or side-by-side just based on the size and the overcrowding of those schools. So we also have another set of increased costs. A lot of these, we've used grants to cover at this point in time, but personal protective equipment and additional cleaning costs, plastic glass devices between, sometimes between students and definitely at all of our front desks. We needed to invest in more Chromebooks so that we had the needed technology for grades 1 through 5 so that they could do learning from home. We invested in extra online tools, CSO, which is a, which is an assessment and portfolio program. And we also invested in enhanced Google tools, including Google Classroom, Google Meets and others. And Edge Newity, which is an online learning option for the high school for some of our specialized classes with slow numbers. These costs have been covered by CARES Act money or in our grants and the grants that we've applied for over the summer.
So as we worked on creating both the hybrid model and the required remote learning academy, we quickly realized that it did require additional staff. Norwood Public Schools have made the commitment that our RLA will be taught by teachers who are employed by Norwood Public Schools. The work of the school committee and the administration over the summer led us to identify that we did need to hire the teachers that you can see on the screen in front of you. These positions have mostly been hired as long-term substitutes just for this year. We did create two new positions of instructional technology specialists. These specialist positions are District 1, and I'm sure you can understand why we would need these technology specialists this year in a hybrid and remote learning situation. We needed to hire four additional special education teachers. At the high school, one ELL teacher, 17 elementary teachers. Again, this is both for the hybrid model and the RLA. At the high school, we needed to hire two paraprofessionals, and at the high school and middle school, we needed to increase some part-time teachers to full-time status. This additional personnel cost the district $1,418,470.
But Madam Chair, if I could just add, add a few comments on this slide. You know, the first is, if you think about having to spread our students out into different places, it's going to require more people to cover those students because we are working with them simultaneously. And the other question that I've heard about is, well, what if we go to remote? What does that mean for these extra people? Basically, we've built a model, we can pivot between our hybrid and our remote on a moment's notice, so these teachers would still be employed, working with our students, while we hopefully return to our hybrid model as soon as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Now, although those personnel requests or additions at this point do add up quickly, the school committee has been working to absorb as much of the cost as we could in our existing budget. So with some budget flexibility and analysis, we have been able to increase our circuit-breaker offset by $500,000. We have increased our bus fee offset, bus fee offset by $100,000. We were able to shift some expenses to grants totaling $146,556. For this year only, we have put their curriculum refresh on hold, so that is $250,000 that we were able to reallocate to cover the cost of a hybrid and RLA. And other budget reductions that we have made total $40,756. So through some budget flexibility, we are able to absorb $1,037,312 out of the ask. But if you go to the next slide, you will see the request that we are bringing forth to town meeting. So the difference that cannot be absorbed in our current school budget is $381,158. Now, this does represent a 0.72% increase, which is a minimal increase if you take into consideration everything that we are sharing with you that is required by the state to be done this year. In addition to the cost that cannot be absorbed in the school budget, the increased personnel do also add benefit costs to the shared budget with the town of $365,000. So if you look in Special Town Meeting Number 2, Article 2, the total request of money that we are seeking for approval from Town Meeting is $746,158. Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you would like to add with the request for Town Meeting?
No. Well, I think, I think it's important that town meeting members realize that we have worked hard to, to absorb a majority of these costs in our current budget through grants and other means, and have really tried to whittle that down to as low of an ask as we can, which I really think is actually, you know, it is asking for more, more money in the fall, which ultimately, we wish we were not doing, but, you know, I think it does show a fiscal responsibility to the town to try to minimize that as low as possible. And there was an awful lot of effort in applying for grants and finding other ways to, to defer and cover a majority of these costs.
So again, Special Town Meeting is on November 12th. If anybody has any questions on anything in this presentation, you can contact Dr. Thompson or the school committee, and we would be happy to address those questions ahead of time. I would say thank you to the community for all of your support of Norwood Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.